Real quick, I was just then, well, not just then, I was in Danbury High School several months back and I saw some very good things that they were doing there. I didn't hear any concerns about hardware problems. I actually walked into a room that was full of Macs and you should have seen some of the work that those students were doing. You probably saw it already. What type of computers are you all purchasing? This, I guess, 450 number? What types of systems are they?
Mainly, we started on a comprehensive plan several years ago to replace the Citrix workstations that are everywhere. They're in the media center, they're in for secretaries, they're all over the building. And we were not able to complete the phase-in of the Citrix boxes, so what this, the ones that are on for 350 now will continue to replace. There's a huge amount of them that are, well, I shouldn't say huge. Several of them are going to ACE. Several of them are going to replace three of the labs, because not all of our labs are full stations. Some of them are Citrix-driven. And then the other full stations there are basically for the business labs.
Sure. Is that Citrix system based on Linux?
Is it based on Linux?
The operating system?
No, it's a Citrix. It's, and it runs on Windows.
What are the new types of computers that are going to run on? Are they going to run Vista?
Right now, we're not running Vista. No, we've still had too many issues with that, so that'll be a decision. That's not what this is about, though.
I think it is. You just mentioned that you wanted to buy 350 computers.
Right, but we're buying boxes. Our operating systems run through the servers. That's our Citrix neighborhood, our Citrix system. So right now, we're running a Windows platform on the Citrix boxes. Remember, just quickly, the Citrix box delivers the application to the box, so the box is just something that receives it and that allows everything. That's how we have at-home networks for the kids and that's, so this is a huge issue to have all of the things so that teachers can have their boxes working in the room. But it's not a full station. It doesn't have a computer CPU and all of those things.
To the Chair, license agreements for the software for these 350 systems. I think--
All of our licenses, that's a separate issue. The license comes with the license to use it. We run Microsoft Office and all the others. That's a separate issue. Those are already taken care of. Right now, we own the license and we need a box that will allow us to run the updated licenses that we already have.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Perkins. Any other discussion related to technology? Seeing none then, Mrs. Stanley, we were so close.
Just a really quick question to, I guess, Elia Longo. Once we purchase the computers, will we have a working system? And will the students be able to run the computers? Simple.
Simple, I'll have to give a couple-part answer, a few-part answer to it.
I thought it'd be a simple answer.
I'm sorry, and I can't give just a straight yes or no answer to it. The request at the board level was for $2 million, a one-time infusion. Just to set the framework, just for reference, we expend approximately, as Dr. Sell mentioned earlier, said earlier, about three-quarter of a million dollars, which is less than 1% of our budget on information technology. And including that $750,000 is staff compensation, so it's not just all equipment or services or licenses. We are now at, I think we're looking at hundreds of computers that are failing, that are, or have failed to date. The plan was to seek assistance for approximately $2 million, and when we brought it to the common council as part of the budget process, we had included $750,000 as a four-year lease repayment. That would put, placed us or put us into a recursive mode. So yes, you would not see so many familiar faces year after year requesting additional dollars above and beyond what the common council appropriates for our general fund budget. What we're working with today, again, is phase one of a multi-year phase. If we take the $2 million request and we divide it evenly, over $500,000, we're looking at a four-year phase implementation. So what is it bias? It provides approximately one-quarter of the immediate need. Will it, now to answer your question directly, will it address all of the outstanding issues with technology today? I'm not the IT professional here on the Board of Education side, but I know from the financing side on what is needed, my answer is no. It will not address the entire needs of the district today.
At the high school, it will. I think that's your question, Councilwoman, was?
If it's at the high school, yes, because we have earmarked the phase one to address Danbury High School and ACE.
So that was yes?
Yes, thank you.
Yes. Okay. Mr. Saad, for the second time.
To the Chair, to Mr. -- just based on your response to Councilwoman Stanley's remarks, and correct me if I'm wrong, I was thrown off by this a little bit, that approximately less than 1% of the overall Board of Education operating budget is currently allocated for broadly IT. And of that amount, the 750, I think it was, and correct me if that number's inaccurate, for the IT, that's not all for hardware and software, but some of that's for, you said, staff expenses?
For the IT department to support the department, which includes--
How much of that, is that, I'm sorry?
I'm sorry.
If I may, to the Chair, how much of that 750 is actually for hardware and software?
Recursive on an annual basis, about $230,000 for maintenance. Maintenance covers everything from--
Okay, please proceed, Mr. Longo.
Thank you. Approximately $230,000 annually. And the $230,000 is used for technology maintenance, which covers items such as replacement computer units, to toner cartridges, to printers and replacement parts, which is, again, less than a quarter of 1% of our budget.
Okay. If I may follow up, just to clarify, what you're saying is that less than a quarter, is it less than a quarter of 1%?
Less than a quarter of 1%.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Saad, any further discussion related to technology? Mr. Shinisi? I think this is your second time.
To the Finance Director. Thank you. I mean, we heard this evening that the fate of before phases for this, and each one will cost approximately $500,000. Would it be advantageous to go out and bond the whole $2 million at one shot because it would save the city from all the bonding expenses? And I think in the past, that when you issue a bond, you don't necessarily have to release the bonds all at once, that you can actually phase in the bond payouts. So, I mean, I do anticipate that we'll be seeing phase two, phase three, and phase four at some point. But wouldn't it be cheaper overall if we just bond the whole thing and then phase the payouts over time? Or have you looked, I mean, I don't even know the answer, but--
Well, yes and no. I mean, it's, and I'll try not to talk an accountant to an accountant, but you're really, they put together a plan, a four-phase plan that is evolving. And they identified the first phase, and I'm sure those other phases will need to be modified as things move on. They're not ready probably to put together a big package like that. I would highly doubt that. But they're ready to deal with the first phase of that. Now, when you look at a bond, or let me say it, an ordinance of that magnitude, you don't actually bond anything until the project is complete. So you're going to go out for short-term borrowing. All right? If you want to look at it as a phased-in approach, okay. But there, you know, there are other phases may not be funded next year. It all depends on what's happening here.
And let me interject that generally issuance costs, yes, if you bonded, if this was the only issuance we were doing, $2 million, you would save money, but we're constantly rolling issuances with other projects that we have going, so we tend to piggyback some of these sales with other sales that are going on. And the second piece is that you have to look at the ability to execute a project. We may not be able to execute $2 million worth of work in one summer, particularly with the Sun Trust lease and other things that are going on. So by phasing it, I think it gives us time to assess, to identify, and then we really aren't, in terms of issuance costs, we still need a lawyer to do the bond, we still need all of the relevant bond council work done. So we piggyback that with other borrowings that we do.
So we'll lump it all together at some point in the future when it comes to that.
A general comment, follow-up. I know the Board of Education is here too, and you can get to your comment. If, by chance, because I think they established there is a need to do this, and I think I agree, there's a need for it, and I'm ready to vote against this, because I think we're piecemealing this. But I'm also willing to go to approve this tonight, only on the preference, if there's a possibility, if the Board of Education actually comes back next year and says to this council, to you, to the mayor, that we have phases two, three, and four, and we can implement that within a period of a year, and then the ability to go out and bond the other 1.5 million, again, instead of piecemealing it, would that be advisable, again, overall, to save the city money in the end?
You mean next year?
Next year.
Should they come back?
They come back and say two, three phases.
I think we're, I mean--
Perhaps.
I'm already worried about next year's budget, so, you know, look, we're going to have to look at what kind of financial position, and we got to look at the economy, got to look at interest rates, a lot of discussion we've already had tonight, to determine whether we can fund even phase two next year. However, it may be that we discuss doing a very small, tight borrowing for just technology to finish the project off, and very possibly, at least this issuance will get them up and running and get them going, particularly the critical mass need we have at the high school. So certainly that's something to consider, Council. Good thoughts.
Further discussion, Mr. Rotella.
Thanks, Your Honor. I just have a comment. I would strongly encourage the board to look at the IT department, to look at open source moving forward. You may have looked at it already and said it's not a good fit for the high school and for the other schools, but it looks like you guys are really jammed up and you can save some serious licensing fees with Word and other open-source Linux operating systems and everything else that can save you hundreds of thousands of dollars going forward. And this is something that I think we're all going to have to take a look at in City Hall and citywide. Thank you.
Mr. Rotella. Mrs. Stanley, it's your third time.
Final time. I'm just concerned that we're just putting a Band-Aid on this technology with the high school, and I'm afraid that when phase two, three, and four come up, phase one will be outdated. Do you feel that that's going to happen? This is through you to the IT department?
Allow the question, but Mrs. Stanley is now banned from other questions.
Excuse me?
I'm teasing you. Mr. Longo, you want to address that, or?
I'm going to defer.
Of the IT department.
Dr. Sack, or, okay, the IT director?
Really, that's a catch-22. We come, we gave you a $2 million plan based on our comprehensive needs assessment. We get the first phase for the high school, we come next year and we say, no. We have to go in our budget, as we did this year, and prioritize what we want to spend our money for. It's competing funds, nothing different than what you do. Our aim is to put the product in line so our kids can use them. K-8, we're going to have a problem. High school's going to be okay. It's going to be okay for about seven or eight years right now, let's say. But we need to get some infusion of technology at the middle and high, and elementary. And our hope is that we're able to come back and talk about that. We do have a plan that we, if it's funded, we're better off than only a quarter of it being funded.
And if you, let me just add to this. If you funded the entire thing, you still have that, you're never done with technology. It never ends. I mean, I don't know how else to say that. And this technology that we're rolling over now, in many cases, is nine, 10 years, 11 years old. So it's seen, we've got more than enough use to the lifetime of the information that's out there. I don't think we're putting a Band-Aid on the high school. I think that's our critical need. It's a tough budget year. We're trying to address the critical needs first, and then go back and look at the middle schools, and then the elementary schools. And as somebody suggested, Mr. Shinisi suggested, we may come back and next year have a miracle in our funding and say, hey, we've got a million five out of the operating budget to put towards this. Or maybe we do a small issuance to cover the balance of the work for next year. But the only other concern I just want to raise is that I'm always concerned about our ability to execute a project and borrowing and then not being able to deliver that project. I think this is doable, it's executable. Those kids will have new computers when they walk in in the fall, and then we'll go back and retail at the middle school. So, you know, I certainly would just want to raise that issue. Mr. Perkins.
General comment. I still think I see strategy problems. It's not comprehensive enough. And I know that just at our place alone, we implemented a telephony system. It took months of planning. I don't hear this kind of talk from these people. So I'll be voting no against this funding.
Thank you, Mr. Perkins. Any other discussion? At this time, I'm going to try your minds on the technology piece. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposition signify by saying nay.
Nay.
Could the negatives please raise their hand? Okay, we have Mr. Perkins, Mr. Visconti, Mr. Esposito, Mr. Saad, Mr. Rotella, and Mr. Levy, that being 15, 6. Item 23? Is that correct? Item 23, please. Item 23.
Ordinance, an ordinance appropriating $497,850 for school improvements in the 2008, 2009 capital budget, and authorizing the issuance of $497,850 bonds of the city to meet said appropriation and pending the issuance thereof, the making of temporary borrowings for such purpose.
What's your pleasure, Councilman Cabo?
Thanks, Your Honor. I'd like to make a motion that we receive the communication and adopt the ordinance as presented.
Motion made and seconded by Mrs. Stanley, discussion about the borrowing for the roof at Roberts Avenue School, excuse me, Park Avenue School. Mrs. Dix.
Elia, or maybe Dr. Sell. First question is, how were these projects selected?
Actually, you might want to direct that to--
They're selected by the city, given that they're city buildings and maintained by city staff.
Mr. Roy, and Mr. Corey.
Okay, yes. How were these projects selected? And in terms of the roof at Park Avenue School, is this the only leaky roof in the school system?
Now, we have roof, several roofs within our school district that we have just completed a study and have a pretty good handle on prioritizing them for repair. We just conducted a study on the physical aspect of our entire infrastructure. So this is one of the top priority roofs. There is a commitment in the next several years, every year, to put together a few projects based on priority, maybe boilers, maybe roofs, and maybe pumps, such as what you have tonight. But yes, there's a priority list of projects that have to be done based on necessity.
And another question on the roof. If this roof is not completed or reconstructed, what happens to the school? Will the school be shut down?
Well, what happens is we keep patching it and we keep chasing a leak. That's basically what happens when you have a roof leak. There's a lot of concerns. The concern is, as you develop leaks, air quality issues develop in a school, because there's a potential for mold to grow. So it's a serious enough issue where we have to keep a real good eye on it. We work with the school district. As soon as they discover an issue, they contact our facilities department. Our facility department goes out, sometimes even with outside people, to chase the leak down.
And Park Avenue is particularly acute. I could tell you, we almost had a closed school, I want to say November-ish.
It was in--
Early, maybe February.
Early fall, late fall, yeah. We had a pretty--
It was in November. There was actually water in the cafeteria, and there was discussion about shutting the school down at that point, because it was in such rough shape. Unfortunately, Antonio's staff got out there and, you know, we got it closed up. But it's, it's an active, active leaking situation there. It's a problem. It's the worst of the worst.
Do you have another question?
Sure.
In terms of the middle school water, what is that? Is that a utility cost?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
In terms of the Broadview Middle School water?
Oh, sure.
Is that a utility cost? What exactly is that project?
Now, I'll, just a little history on, the Broadview School has a very low water pressure service area. It's only about 20 pounds of pressure in that area. The only way to get adequate pressure to facilitate the needs of domestic water in that school is we have these pumps, they're called booster pumps. And what they do is they jack up the pressure up to anywhere between 50 to 80 PSI. So these booster pumps, five years ago, were pretty much revamped by our own staff, new bushings, new bearings, new propellers. And, you know, we got a couple more years out of them, but they're at the end of their useful life. So these are booster pumps, brand-new booster pumps, that will facilitate getting the pressure up to where we need it for that school.
Mr. Saad.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just want to say that, I mean, a roof, water, urgent, long-term capital improvement here, I think it makes a lot of sense, and I certainly will be supporting this, as I hope my colleagues will. Thank you.
Mr. Saad, further discussion? Seeing none then, I'll try your minds on fixing the leaky roof. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The opposition? Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk, item 24, please.
Ordinance, an ordinance appropriating $500,000 for recreation and public improvement projects in the 2008 and '09 capital budget, and authorizing the issuance of $500,000 bonds of the city to meet said appropriation and pending the issuance thereof, the making of temporary borrowings for such purpose.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. What's your pleasure, Council? Mr. Knapp.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to make a motion to adopt the ordinance as presented.
Motion made and seconded by Councilwoman McMahon. Discussion related to the ordinance relating to recreation and public improvement projects. I'll start with Mr. Shinisi.
Antonio, Public Works Director. Can you give me a breakdown of the various drainage improvement projects that you have planned and where they're going to be?
Sure. Mr. Shinisi, I don't have a list with me tonight, but I can forward the target areas. Most of the areas that we're looking, the approach in general, and you've heard me speak about this, the approach is to really work on drainage issues that, one, impact private properties, two, that in the wintertime really causes us to spend significant overtime monies repeatedly as water enters the gutter and it starts freezing. So the general approach for the $390,000 is to, one, protect private property, which is being impacted by our gutter flow, two, is to go in and deal with the icing conditions, which is not only deteriorating our roads, but is actually causing a tremendous of overtime expenditure and product expenditure, sand and salt. So that is the approach, if you will, as we move forward in spending the $390,000. But I will gladly give you a list of all the projects that we completed, which had that same focus, and the projects that we're planning on working on for the $390,000.
Mr. Shinisi.
Just a follow-up on the Hatters Park improvement field. What's, can you give us a breakdown of the general, or what that's going to be?
Yeah, there's been quite a interest and request for the infields, all the infields, to really be rebuilt. And quite honestly, they really need to be done. So the $60,000 will be to completely strip the infields, regrade them, regrade the adjoining grass areas, and then to do some drainage on the upper field. That field gets impacted by groundwater pretty extensively. So, and there's some possible fencing repairs that are also going to be included. And if you notice, I've been working my way through quite a few of the fields in town. Last year, with the mayor's help, we were able to do the four fields down at Rogers Park. This past summer, we actually rebuilt the Westerners Field, which came out phenomenal. And actually, my highway superintendent is working on a high school field right now. So we're really working our way through a lot of the fields that, when I first got here, there was significant concern about safety and how we can actually play on some of these fields. So we're working our way through it. This is going to be pretty much, I would say, the second to the third, the last, second to the last phase of field improvements.
Again, to follow up with the Chair. So that, these improvements be done in-house? I mean, you're going to do the work yourself?
We're going to do as much of it in-house as we can. We're actually starting to, we're getting pretty good in rebuilding these infields. We did have a contractor come and help us with the Westerners Field, but we played, we paid very close attention to how we did it. Now, he's got laser-operated equipment. I mean, the field is phenomenal. We don't have that, but, you know, we have, we have some guys that have great eyes for grading, so that's what we're going for. Not as good as laser, but close.
Yeah. It's that crooked line in the--
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Roy. Further discussion, Mr. Levy.
Have to get this technology down on the button. My question is, you know, a lot of, it was never any doubt on any of these requests that there's a need. This one in particular, though, I just wonder, and actually with the other ordinance as well, we had a $16 million bond issue. This is a short time ago, and it was for open space and recreation. I just, you know, this is all about planning, it's all about, just as the drainage, we have the East Ditch, the Blind Brook, the Peyton Airman, and all, and it goes on and on. They call Danbury Swamp Field for a reason. And I just wonder, you know, how is the planning done on this? Do we have really a concise of plan to go forward instead of piecemealing all of this? A roof, we know, has a 25, a 20-year life expectancy. A playing field, we have no idea what the life expectancy is. Depends on how much you play on it. So I just wonder, you know, why it wasn't included in the, in the bond issue, and what we can anticipate to bring our, our fields up to a condition and maintain them that will be suitable to make our city a place that you can live, recreate in, and enjoy life in general.
If I could just answer the first part of that for you, Mr. Levy. The issue of the infields, or fields at Hatters Park are not necessarily maintenance-driven, they're more systemic drainage issues, where there's ponding in the middle of the fields and there's areas that just never have drained right since we opened that complex back in 2000, 2001. Those are more systemic problems that are there, in opposition to, say, general maintenance stuff that you should be doing on an ongoing basis, aerifying and seeding and so forth. And so that came up on the radar screen really through Mr. Copelandis and through the Girl's Softball League, which services about Nick, 4500, is that maybe two, about 400 young ladies that, which has really exploded in use and intensive use, which has exacerbated the drainage issues that we have out there. So this wasn't necessarily on the radar initially last fall, but was brought to us after the open space bond had been approved and showed up on our long-term capital, you know, on the CIP in the back of the budget book. We certainly took that, the project, and felt that it would be important to address the needs of those young ladies that are using the field, but I agree in terms of maintenance issues. Once you get the field up to standard, you got to keep doing those things that need to be done. Mr. Roy wanted to just add to that, and then Mr. Levy, go.
I just want to add to that, that we did get several requests after the bond was done. And we've been trying to get those fields to the best playing conditions that we can, but they're really, the clay's completely packed, and rightfully so, they have a gripe on playing on those fields. But I also just want to tell you, this is my second year here. I'm really starting to put my hands around not only the city's road infrastructure, bridge infrastructure, but the entire recreational infrastructure. We have a significant recreational infrastructure. Actually, we're blessed. We probably have one of, in the four municipalities that I've worked in, this city's probably got one of the best recreational opportunities for our residents that any other town I've ever worked for. So, but with that comes the maintenance piece of it. And I just got done awarding a contract. We're going to go in, we're going to actually start taking some soil samples of all of our outfields. And the reason for that is, I want to be able to feed the issue. I want to be able to properly give what that grass needs so we can get it up and running. The only way to really do that is, you got to get some soil samples, we're going to send them up to Hartford, they're going to get analyzed. So we're starting to put our hands around it, but it is a monumental task based on just the, you know, we must mow almost 400 acres of grass. Now, not all of that is being played on, a lot of it is associated with buildings, but it's just a significant infrastructure. But we do have a plan, and quite honestly, you can't be in my position and not have a maintenance plan or not have a feel for where your infrastructure is. a maintenance plan, or not have a feel for where your infrastructure is, because you will never get the right equipment to maintain it, and you'll never get the right resources. When I go in asking for money, quite a few of you guys ask me, what do you need it for? Why do you need it? What's driving the need, the necessity? And I have to be able to justify that, and the way to do that is to bring facts to you. And the only way to do that is I've got to study my infrastructure.
And one of the questions I also have through the chair for me, is, all of these $500,000 notes, they all come out to perfect $500,000. I was wondering, where do you get these numbers? Because we have problems in the, in the past, and I'm sure we have them in the future, with inflation and increased costs, and you wind up and you get from home plate to first base, and that's it. Because you didn't have, I mean, we just reviewed that with the Board of Education, in a sense, we're getting maybe to first base. But how do you come up with these numbers? Are they real numbers, or just estimations?
No. You can't estimate, you can't just throw a number together in today's day, you know, in today's climate, between the fuel costs and all these other costs, you almost have to anticipate, by the time you're able to execute the project, what type of an inflation you're going to be hit with. So, yeah, these are real numbers, there's cubic yard associated with how much clay we're getting and things like that. And you know what? When we're ready to do the project, if there is an issue where an item has inflated beyond what we anticipated, then we have to go back into the scope that we have and try to modify so we can literally back into the monies that we have. And that's, that's what everybody does today. As a private business owner, you probably do the same.
Well, I thank you. You know, my vote is really not going to be against the project, per se. They're all needed. It's going to be the mechanism of funding.
I understand.
And, and that's the rationale to my vote. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Levy. Further discussion, Mr. Visconti.
Thank you, Your Honor. This is really not an easy vote to take, whether it's yes or no, but I know the fields over at Hatters Park need to be improved. And drainage, what it does to city streets and sidewalks is phenomenal. What it does to private property and homes is even worse, and I can speak firsthand for that. I do have a problem with the Richter House improvements. I hate to spend $50,000 of the taxpayers' money, even though it's just a one-shot deal, I hope, that should have really been done by the Richter Authority. If it weren't for the other two items on that, on this issue, I definitely would be voting no, but I intend to support this issue. Thank you.
Further discussion. Seeing none then, we'll, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Shinisi.
Thank you, Your Honor. I guess the question would be to you, just following up on Councilman Levy's question. And this relates to the Richter House improvements, which, the way I understand it, it's for the roof, to stabilize the roof. What would happen if there's, after the costs come in, that the, to stabilize that roof comes out to be $70,000 instead of the $50,000? Who would pay the extra cost to place that roof? Would that come out of the Richter Park Authority budget, or we would have to fund it within our own budget?
We, let me just take a step back and say that I think Mr. Levy and Mr. Shinisi make points, that there are projects do experience overruns, that there are unforeseen circumstances. We've been through it. I can't tell you how many projects over the years, prior to me getting here, while I'm here, and it'll happen after I leave. It's just the nature of those of you who work in construction, you know that. The numbers that we have here, in this case, the Richter House improvements, were taken based on our assessment of the roof with several individuals, as well as estimates that were got, that were received by the Richter Park Authority. And I certainly hear Mr. Visconti's concerns, and let me tell you, I agonized over whether or not I should put this money in, or we should, we should go and do this. But I guess the overarching thought that I kept coming back to is that we don't want to create another Terriwell Castle, and the Hearthstone Castle, in the sense that, yes, you could argue that it was the Terriwell Park Authority's responsibility, they never did anything about it, the place collapsed, and now we're still having task force trying to figure out what to do with the castle. So, what I wanted to do was preserve our asset. Ultimately, if the Authority goes bankrupt, the Richter Park Authority, this is the city's asset. So, I want to preserve our asset by putting a roof on it and weather-tightening the building, and then say to the Authority, okay, we put the roof on and we got the building weather-tight. Now it's your job to find the other half a million to a million dollars that's going to take you to bring it up to code and use it the way that your master plan says you ought to use it. And so, to answer your question, if it runs over $50,000, we don't think it will, because we think we built in enough contingency in there to handle that, but we don't plan on doing a lot of work there, except weather-tight the building, and to preserve the asset that we have. And the ball is thrown right back to the Richter Park Authority and says, now you have to go and do your part to fix this building, because we certainly can't take on the entire renovation of the building. Further discussion, Mr. Perkins.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Idrill. I know you mentioned earlier that some of these drainage improvement projects were to plan for different types of events that may cause property damage. Could you just give me a couple specific examples of where those biggest issues or concerns are in the city?
Sure. There's, I don't have exact locations, I can give you the type of, sometimes, situation that happens. As water comes across the gutter, it may hit a low spot where it jumps the gutter, goes down somebody's property, and either floods their garage, or it erodes part of their front lawn. In some cases, it actually goes right into a pool. So, these are the types of property damage that we have to really prioritize and eliminate, because you're responsible for that. If you can directly relate our flow of water to a damage on a property, then that property owner has a justifiable claim against us. So, those are top priorities for us. Icing conditions, only because in the winter, not only does it generate an incredible expenditure, but it also causes an incredible liability issue for us. And those are types of conditions that we're looking at.
Follow-up. Sure, Mr. Perkins. Can you give me an idea of how many projects this may cover?
I just, sure. I can get you a list, which will make it very easy for you. Just to give you an example, Briar Ridge Road, we did last year. Mr. Shinisi can probably tell you, we were up there chopping ice in the winter, if not once a day, sometimes twice a day. As we chop it, it will refreeze. We spent probably almost $90,000 just on that one road, but we took care of it. We have not been up there since the row was completed, applying ice, dealing with the telephone calls, getting the overtime expenditures. So, that, that's kind of, you could easily spend $90,000 to $100,000 on one road. Our hope is not to do that. Our hope is to really get as much bang for the buck as we can. We're designing these projects in-house, we're building them in-house now. Unless there's a specific type of equipment that we need that we don't have, all of this work's going to be done in-house. So, it really stretches our dollar a lot further than, you know, the way we used to do it, which was hire, hire our contractors. Okay?
Thank you, Your Honor. I really would like to have seen, you know, a lot of this in the February bonding, but it makes, it makes it a tough vote, you know, whether or not these improvements at Hatters Park are necessary, you know, stripping out the Richter House improvements, but it makes it a tough vote. I think I have to support this one. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Perkins. Any further discussion? Seeing none then, I'll try your minds on the drainage and improvements. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposition, nay?
Nay.
Could the negatives, please, raise a hand? That would be Mr. Levy, Mr. Rotello, and Mr. Sadi. Eighteen to three. And last but not least, our exciting phosphorus study. Doesn't get any better than this.
Ordinance, an ordinance appropriating $500,000 for a phosphorus study in the 2008, 2009 capital budget, and authorizing the issuance of $500,000 bonds to the city to meet said appropriation, and pending the issuance thereof, making up temporary borrowings for such purpose.
Madam Clerk, what's your pleasure, counsel? Councilman Johnson.
Thank you, Your Honor. We move to receive the communication and adopt the ordinance as presented.
Ammited and seconded by Mr. Shinisi. Discussion, Mr. Rotello.
Thank you, Your Honor. Through the chair to Corporation Counsel.
Let's see what handles.
Now, I stated earlier this evening that I would vote for one $500,000 bond, and I have. But now this is number two, and I want to vote for it, because I don't believe the taxpayers are going to be paying for it. From what I understand, the ratepayers for the city sewer and water service will be, and to me, that means it sort of falls outside the purview of the charter limit on $500,000. Is that true?
I can't say for sure if it is or not, because typically, the answer is yes to that, but because it's a, this would be a bonded item, I think Mr. St. Hilaire might be better suited to answer this question. I'm not sure about that. I don't give you the wrong answer.
I'll be fine to listen to Mr. St. Hilaire, through the chair.
Could you restate your question, please? I want to make sure I understand what you're...
These bonds in general have to be paid for by the taxpayers. This bond specifically may not have to be, and if it doesn't have to be, I'm comfortable voting for it. If it's going to be paid by the users of the system that will be benefiting, benefiting from this bond. I don't want somebody at Candlewood Lake who's dealing with septic system issues and well-water issues and those kinds of things to also have to pay for the interest and the principal on something that will never benefit him until he gets an assessment and gets a sewer pipe up there. So, my question is, will this be paid down by the sewer and water ratepayers, or will it be a citywide taxpayer-based paydown? Thank you.
Sewer and water ratepayers.
Thank you.
And let me just add that, there is a DEP grant that goes with this, Mr. Idrill. Is that correct? Any sense of what that number is?
So, we wouldn't be borrowing the full 500. Some of it would be offset through a grant.
Although this, right. Okay. Okay. Any other discussion about the phosphorus study? Mr. Perkins.
Thank you, Your Honor. Director of Finance. Just for clarification, so the people who will benefit from this phosphorus study will be, receive an additional charge on their sewer and water rates, or water bills.
It will be paid as, it will be paid in that fund, and it will be rolled into the rates. Now, whether it'll have an impact on the rates or not is yet to be determined, because the fund may be able to absorb that. Okay?
But you're saying that particular population of people are the ones that incur the expense...
The users, the users will be the ones responsible for that. Okay.
Sadi.
If I, not a question, to the finance director, just a statement, so people are clear, and anybody correct me if I'm wrong. The sewer and water are enterprise funds, and as enterprise funds, if there's money in that fund, it pays for the capital improvements and other expenses of the fund. The ratepayers fund that fund through their rates and the sewer quarterly bills that you receive. So, I think what the finance director was saying is that, if there's enough money already in the fund, given the potential DEP grant, that there may be little, if any, rate increase based on having to pay that debt service. There may be some, but any increase in any debt service would be paid for only by the enterprise fund, and possibly by extension, only the ratepayers would benefit from the study. Is that be correct?
Do you want me to confuse the issue?
Sorry. I'm trying to simplify.
The only caveat to that is, if, for some reason, the sewer fund does not, or the water fund, if it's a water project, doesn't spin off enough cash, from time to time, the city has lent money to the sewer fund and then paid, been paid back over the years. So, I don't see that happening, because we've got both funds on a very strong financial footing. If you remember, we did the rate study when Mr. Diorio was here, we gently raised rates, we didn't raise rates this year, we may or may not do it next year. We're in pretty good shape. So, generally that, I'm not trying to confuse the issue, but I just want to be clear. Okay. Right. Mr. Levy, then, Mr. Rotello.
Question, I, in my mind, it's always been the benefit, he who receives the benefit of the service must pay for it, but I was wondering if this phosphorus study is a mandate by, are we under orders to, to do this? So, in effect, even if, even if they did, the sewer fund did not have the money at this time, they would have to pay back out of the enterprise fund, the general fund. Is that correct, my understanding?
Yeah, I mean, we don't have a direct order yet. We've got a very stern warning.
I think at one time, we actually took some of their assets.
Yes, very possible.
And in return for the value.
Right, that's right. You're absolutely right. We do, do we expect an order, Antonio, or?
We should do a very quick...
Go ahead.
Phosphorus.
Your, our discharge permit was due for renewal on February 8th of 2008. We submitted all the paperwork, which was what we needed to do in order to meet the deadline, so we're operating currently under a, our old permit, but as the DEP started reviewing some of the limits that we're allowed for discharge into the Still River, one of the big focus, which is really coming down from the federal DEP, is that state DEPs start looking at their phosphorus discharge. It's becoming a global issue. So, that gets trickled down to us and a bunch of other municipalities. So, in order to really understand that, there's a couple municipalities, we're one of them, where we're going to be issuing an abatement order. We've been meeting about it since March 14th, is when DEP came down. They said, guys, you're going to get an abatement order. We're putting the language together, we want your input into it, but it's going to be an abatement order, and you're going to be under consent to perform the study. Once the study goes in, and some of these other communities prepare a study, then they'll look at setting a limit for us. And I think that's a very wise way to proceed, because, I'm going to tell you something, some of these phosphorus removal projects can be multimillion-dollar projects. So, where they set the target is very, very critical, and we have to facilitate the best study that we can to kind of justify what we're really going to get at the end, by lowering our phosphorus rate. And, I don't know, I don't know if I confused everybody or...
That's great. Any other discussions? Appreciate it. Mr. Rotello.
While I don't anticipate the sewer and water company in Danbury going broke, and I fully expect the ratepayers to be able to pay this $500,000 study down, we can turn this around and talk about what would happen if we didn't do it. And if we don't do it, we're either going to get fined, which means everybody's going to have to pay. It's going to come out of the general fund, or we're going to have to be buying some credits, like we're doing with Nitrogen now. So, at some point, somebody's going to have to pay for this. And worst case is that people who aren't even using the sewer and water system are going to be the ones on the hook. I mean, citywide in Danbury. We get fined a half a million bucks because we're dumping a lot of phosphorus into, I guess we're going to Lulanoa and Long Island Sound. Ultimately, you know, we start getting into stuff with FERC and everything else, it costs a lot of money. Credits, we'll probably, it looks like we'll probably have to go there for 10 or 15 years before we have to do remediation, but we do it this way, the ratepayers pick up the tab, we may find some efficiencies in the system. I mean, this, this could be win-win. Very often, we're looking at removing something from a stream, whether it's air pollution or whatever, and it seems really expensive at first. We find a better way to do it, we find some efficiencies, and we find that 10 or 15 years down the road, we're better off. Thank you.
Thank you, Your Honor. Mr. Rotello, any other discussions? Seeing none then, I'll try your mind on the phosphorus study. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I just have a motion carries unanimously. Items 26 and 28 were consent. I'm sorry. 27 was not consent, correct? Right. Madam Clerk, item 29.
Ad hoc report, ambulance/advanced life support.
Who's the chairman of that? Chief Curran.
Members, Jack Knapp, Fred Visconti, ex-official member Greg Seaberry. Also present were DHCA, Matt Cassavecchia, Deputy Chief Tom Whittle, Mike McLaughlin from the mayor's office, Assistant Financial Director Dan Garrick, Fire Chief Jeff Harold, Head of EMS... Head of EMS, the Danbury Fire Department Ray Rodriguez, Corporation Counsel Lazlo Pinter, Corporation Counsel Eric Gotchak. Chairman Curran explained the purpose of the evening meeting was to review and consider approving the proposed ambulance/advanced life support contract with the city of Danbury for the next five years. Chairman Curran introduced everyone present at the meeting. Chairman Curran asked Corporation Counsel Gotchak to provide everyone with some background regarding the request before the committee. Attorney Gotchak explained that the agreement reflects significant changes. The first being the term, which had been extended to five years with the additional option for another five years pending agreement of all parties. Second was to arrange for the DHCA to acquire insurance to cover the $100,000 deductible in the event of an accident. This change came about as a result of a motor vehicle accident in which the city paid the $100,000 deductible. In doing this, the city's exposure is limited. Emergency personnel operate city-owned vehicles, and then when an accident occurs, the city is responsible. In all other respects, the agreement between the commit, before the committee is the same agreement that's been used for the past 10 years. Chairman Curran asked if the city would reimburse any money. Assistant Finance Director Dan Garrick explained that there had been a transfer of fund balance back into the general fund. For fiscal years '07-'08, there was $500,000 budget, and in '08-'09, $750,000 being budgeted. This is the first time this has happened as a result of a fund balance growing over the past several years. Mr. Garrick expressed concern with the language currently being proposed regarding the $100,000 deductible. He discussed the matter with the city's insurance carrier. Coordination of the coverage is an issue. He suggested possibly using language other, under the old harmless clause rather than under the insurance clause. Councilman Visconti expressed concern with the city's future exposure and having adequate coverage. Attorney Gotchak has not explored Mr. Garrick's concerns before the meeting. In terms of overall coverage, the city has excessive liability policies that would fill in the gap, $10 million excessive coverage. Councilman Knapp asked whether or not the agreement contained language that would allow the changes prior to the expiration of the agreement. Attorney Gotchak explained that if the need arose, the common council could approve any amendments to the agreement. The ordinance provided the common council with the flexibility to determine whether or not an item needs to go out to bid. The agreement before the committee has been in place for a number of years. Fire Chief Jeff Harold was comfortable with the language contained in the agreement. He did point out a few items. Section 1, Part 3, Page 6 of 29 regarding accommodations for all paramedics, the housing of the ambulance, his desire was to find more permanent housing for the ambulance. The airport location has been outgrown and the location is too remote from the hospital. Also in the agreement, there is a section which involves an overnight oversight committee. The committee has yet to be fully encapsulated in the agreement. Committee is flexible, which can change over time, but the department liaison needs to be appointed. Mr. Cassavecchia pointed out that for the past 15 years, the liaison for the city has been the Director of Finance. Fire Chief Jeffrey Harold pointed out, the fire department's first response system is a fire truck which is dispatched with trained medical personnel. The truck houses similar equipment to that of an ambulance, holds similar equipment to that of an ambulance. The city and the hospital need to come to an agreement regarding the exchange of equipment in the field. A motion was made by Councilman Knapp and seconded by Councilman Visconti, that the committee recommends to the common council that they approve the ambulance/advanced life support contract as presented. A motion carried unanimously. A motion to adjourn was made by Councilman Visconti, seconded by Councilman Knapp. The motion carried unanimously at 6:00 p.m.
Thank you, Chief. What's your pleasure, counsel? Councilman Calderino?
Thank you, Your Honor. At this time, I'd like to make a motion that we receive the committee's positive recommendation, and we approve the contract as presented.
Being seconded by Mr. Visconti, discussion regarding the ambulance contract. Mr. Chaneysey.
Thank you, Your Honor. I guess it'd be a, it's a point of order to either the corporation counsel. Now, normally, when you have a contract, doesn't that contract normally go out to bid? And normally, it's up to the council to waive that, the right to bid? Is that true?
Normally, that's the procedure.
The council has the authority to waive that.
Yes.
Now, should that be made part of this motion, that the council waived the bid process and to accept the recommendations?
You could do that, or, under the terms of the previous agreements, that's assumed already, because the clause in the contract that you're renewing now, if you will, and you renewed five years ago, indicates that a five-year option is provided, provided the parties agree to it. Well, the parties agree after negotiation. So you're inherently, or implicitly, I should say, doing that. By, if you approve this agreement, you're implying that you're, that you've considered the possibility of bidding it, you decided instead to honor the clause in the contract and are approving yourself.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chaneysey. Further discussions related to the ambulance contract? Seeing none, then?
I wanted to bring to the council's attention, Your Honor, if I might, that the committee that met on this subject considered the insurance question, and what was presented to the committee had a provision in it, proposed, that the city would pay $15,000 and obtain insurance for the city's $100,000 deductible, which would not be covered in case of an accident, which would be caused, for example, by ambulance driver, as happened a year, a couple of years, a few years ago. That deductible, the city would be on the hook for that deductible. So what was originally proposed and presented to the committee, and I think Councilman Visconti asked about that, was that the city would pay $15,000, in essence, to buy some coverage. Well, that doesn't, turns out, not to work out very well. Instead, the finance department has recommended, and that's one of the things that Mr. Garrick commented on that night, the finance department recommended that that not be done, that there be a reserve clause established to cover such an eventuality, that that would work better. So the council should be aware that what the committee report reflected is actually, we're staying with what the contract has right now. So there's no change to that.
Thank you, Mr. Pinter, Mr. Visconti.
Thank you, Your Honor. To the chair, that's going to be all included in the new contract when it's drawn up, all of those changes?
That was going to be a change, councilman. Now, the contract will stay with the language that it presently has, so you're not making that change anymore.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Visconti. Any further discussion relating to this contract? Seeing none, then I'll try your minds. Alls in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposition? Motion carries unanimously. Madam Clerk, item 31, please.
Ad hoc report, Hispanic Center.
Who was the chairman? Mr. Riley.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'm Mark DeBoutin, Mayor. Common council members, May 22nd, 2008. Chairman Robert Riley called the meeting to order at 6:35 p.m. In attendance were committee members, Councilman Nagashay, Councilman Visconti, ex-official members, Councilman Taisho, Councilman Seaberry, Councilman McMahon, Councilman Trombetta, Councilman Calderino, Councilman Cabo, Councilman Knapp, and Councilman Curran. Councilman Arcanti entered the meeting at 6:55 p.m. Were also in attendance. Dan Garrick, Assistant Finance Director, petitioner Eva Cologne, Executive Director of the Hispanic Center, and members of the public were present. Chairman Riley said that the charge of the meeting was to consider the restoration of the funding for the Hispanic Center for 2007-2008. Assistant Director of Finance, Dan Garrick, explained that any funds restored for 2007-2008 would come from a contingency fund. The avenues are down and all accounts are frozen at the present time. Executive Director Cologne gave an overview of the mission statement and 2007 annual report for the Hispanic Center. Upon questions from Councilman Nagashay and Councilman Visconti, Ms. Cologne states that the impact of the loss of funding resulted in reduction of the job development component of the center's program and the funding. If restored, would only be for the 2007-2008 year. Ex-official members asked questions regarding investigation of application for grants. The amount withheld amounted to 8% of their working budget. Other sources of funds that the center received, the final quarter fiscal would be approximately Programs offered and a number of volunteers at the center. There was also a discussion regarding the education coordinator position, which was a volunteer position previously and would remain part-time instead of the expectation of a full-time position and funding from other towns. Councilman Cabo gave background information explaining the events leading up to the suspending of funding. He said that if there is funding restored, that it is understood that the taxpayers of the city will not stand for legislative advocacy against the city, state, or country enforcing its laws. Ms. Cologne said that the funding for the Hispanic Center also derives income from the Department of Social Service in the amount of $130,000. United Way in the amount of $72,000 for two years, and the balance of their income comes from foundations and fundraising. There's no funding from the other towns, and 99% of the clients are from Danbury. Public comment followed, among other things, the second building at number 89 West Street, 501, 3C organizations influencing legislation. Missouri Foundation granted an amount of $3,000, and grant funding for the center for over 30 years was discussed. Chair Riley asked for a motion. Discussion continued regarding the ad, which appeared in a newspaper. It was funded by a private donation, which was cleared through and signed by the Board of Directors. Services provided and charges for translation services. Councilman Riley spoke in favor, restored the funding for 2007-2008. Chair Riley asked for a motion. Councilman Nagashay moved to not restore funding for 2007-2008 to the Hispanic Center. Seconded by Councilman Visconti, discussion followed. Councilman Nagashay and Visconti voted in the affirmative, and Councilman Riley cast a negative vote. Motion carried 2 to 1. Councilman Visconti moved to adjourn at 7:31 p.m. Seconded by Councilman Johnson. Motion passed unanymously. Respectfully cemented, Robert Riley, Chair, Shayne Eric Shae, Fred Visconti. Thank you.
I'm going to inform that the council members have seconded a new motion to the chair. So I just want to track the record there. Last time I looked. Still love you. What's your pleasure, counsel? Councilwoman Stanley?
Thank you, Your Honor. I would like to make a motion to receive the committee's report and approve the recommendations of the committee.
We'll have a discussion. We'll start with Mr. Riley, and then work our way down.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'm going to seem like a broken record, because this issue has come around many times, and I would just like to give a little background with regard to the issue, as Councilman Cabo had done at another time. Approximately a year ago, the Hispanic Center, they were having many difficulties with the late director. Funds were being directed toward activities that certainly were questionable. There was no doubt that things had to change. The, I happened to be on a committee where I was chair regarding this situation, and the committee, under my direction, denied the funds for 2007-2008 with the stipulation, ladies and gentlemen, that once the Hispanic Center would get its house back in order, that they could come back before us, and that there was a good possibility that we would restore the funds. Ms. Cologne has come before the ad hoc committee, has come before the council of the whole, and she has brought forth a mission statement that is right on target with what all of us in Danbury would want to see happening at the mission, at the Hispanic Center. She laid out a program, she laid out the programs that were, that she was involved with, and she answered all those questions that needed to be answered in a most elegant It was a very positive thing that she did. And I, for one, when she came before the committee, I could only in my heart say that we needed to really take a hard look at what was going on, because everything that we had asked her to do, she did. And there would be no reason to deny the funds. Now, I understand that it's a very difficult issue. I understand that the federal government has dropped the ball. But I also understand that we, here in the city of Danbury, and like many other communities, we have to, we have to deal with issues, and this is an issue that we're dealing with. Therefore, it is most important that whatever we do, we do with compassion and empathy for our fellow human being. Now, I can only ask my members of this dais, my peers, that in your heart, when you, when you get ready to vote, that you think, and you think more than once about integrity and fairness with regard to what we had asked the Hispanic Center to do, which they did, and then, most of all, most of all, that regarding the issue of fairness, if we're going to drill, if we're going to drill and we're going to, you know, keep asking questions of the Hispanic Center, why did we not do the same thing for ARC? ARC came forward with a much more inflammatory, demeaning news release that spoke about the council itself, and yet, we slapped them on the wrist, and everything was okay. So I really think that we have a question here of fairness, integrity, and what you do for one, you do for two. You don't make an exception. So I'm asking, I'm asking my peers that you really think very deeply on this, and that you would hopefully vote yes to restore the funds. Again, this is, this is difficult.
Second, Robert, just got to get...
Thank you. I just end up with, it's been a difficult issue, and I feel sad that it's been going on so long, but at the same token, I have to respect my fellow peers, my fellow councilmen and women. Whatever they do is, that's the democratic way. So thank you very much.
Sticks. And then, Mr. Rotella.
Through the chair. This has been a very emotional time for me, because in terms of this overall process, I've taken a personal front to this entire issue, and I guess I'm just like Bob Rowley. I guess I get a little emotional about the entire subject, but I have some written remarks, and then after my written remarks, and then after my written remarks, I have a motion. People who work for a living have a saying, "Sometimes to get along, you have to go along." Well, I will not compromise my integrity of going along on this one. As I shared with, as I shared with the Republican caucus last night, this ad hoc meeting was not properly posted in the manner that it should have been. It should have been posted correctly by the city clerk.
Sticks, the posting's not on the...
I know, but this, this has something to do with the entire ad hoc...
And it's open to debate whether it was not, to make a statement like that...
Well, no, but I, I think I need to proceed. I really do. I really think that I need to proceed with this.
No, proceed, just, let's try to keep your comments to...
Yeah, and this ad hoc meeting was not properly posted in the manner that it should have been by the city clerk, and to include persons who they wanted in this ad hoc meeting, and may I add, individuals from the community who have downplayed the importance of diversity within the city. I've checked with corporation counsel regarding what constitutes a legal meeting, but at this point, I'm fully beyond that point. I'm fully beyond that issue, and really want to speak this evening on the process... I'm fully beyond that issue, and really want to speak this evening on the process. I'm talking about the process of what transpired almost two weeks ago. My, my remarks really are about inclusion and about race because this is what the denial of funding for the Hispanic Center is all about. I know I was denied access or even knowing about this meeting because it was promoted in a very secretive and underhand manner by quite a number of the Republican leaders in the city clerk's office. I contacted the city clerk after learning of the meeting, and she stated she was too busy during the course of the week to post the meeting. I contacted the council president the day after the meeting was held, and he simply stated it was posted in the common council chambers.
Mrs. Diggs, you got to speak to the issue.
I am, I am speaking.
The posting of the meeting is not up for vote tonight.
It's not up for vote, but it.
You can take this up on other manners besides.
But this all comes.
With all due respect, to the chair, I wonder if the councilwoman could afford the latitude. It is a very touchy subject, and I'm sure she's not going to dwell on that, and it is to be legislatively advised to debate any issue.
Okay.
Then I would respect the chair to afford that latitude.
All right, well, then I have another motion.
Hold on, Mr. Levy doesn't have the floor here for a second. I appreciate his comments, and we certainly want to afford some latitude on Mrs. Diggs' comments, but the issue, as it relates to whether it was posted or not posted, isn't really germane to the issue of funding the Hispanic Center. So as much as you can keep your comments tight to that, would be appreciated.
It really is focused on the Hispanic Center because I think it was all racially motivated. But then I'll just, I'll, I'll, I'll just, I'll just cut through the chase. I just want to know just exactly what was the motive behind all of this, and wish that maybe some of the other council members will ask the same question, that it will somehow be related to this ad hoc issue. But I want to make the motion to revisit the funding of the Hispanic Center prior to the September 2008 Common Council meeting and to restore the funding as we promised them last year.
So you want to move to amend the report to restore the funding? Do you have a dollar figure for that, Mrs. Diggs, or is it, is it the full amount, or?
It was, it's to the full amount.
Okay.
It was, it was to the full amount that they requested.
Just want to make sure we have a dollar figure that's appropriate. Twenty-five thousand, Mr. St. Lere, or Mr. Garrick, I think it was twenty-five thousand. Okay, twenty-five nine. Okay. So is that, is that acceptable, Mrs. Diggs? Is that the, the number you're using?
So it's twenty-five nine. Or tw- no, I'm sorry, twenty-nine thousand five hundred.
No, it's twenty-five thousand nine hundred. Twenty-five nine.
Is that, Bob, is that correct? Twenty-five nine.
So the motion was to amend the report to restore $25,900 to the Hispanic Center.
And revisit the funding of the Hispanic Center prior to the September 2008 Common Council meeting.
Okay, with the, with the September 2008 meeting?
Well, I can say, I had July, but I gave us a little grace time.
2007, you mean? Okay, so you want to restore the funding for, for last year?
Yes.
Okay. Seconded by Mr. Riley. Okay, and now we're, we'll discuss the amendment. So discussion on the amendment. Mr. Rotella.
Thank you, Your Honor. Through the chair of the Corporation Council. Mr. Pinter, often we will see a motion where a yes is a no and a no is a yes. Tonight, we're looking at one of those right now. The motion originally was to deny the funds to the Hispanic Center. So if we voted on that motion.
Actually, the motion was to adopt the report.
Adopt the report, but the recommendation was to not restore the funding. So if we proceeded with that original motion preceding this motion, and we voted yes, we would be denying the Hispanic Center the funds that, that we had talked about giving them last year. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Sometimes, however, when a yes is a no and a no is a yes, if you do that, or you, or that motion fails, then the opposite happens. In this case tonight, it would be if we had voted no, the funds would have been restored. But I believe there is no mechanism in the original recommendation to actually do that. So preceding Councilwoman Diggs' new motion, there was nothing we could have done tonight, no matter how we voted, to restore the funds to the Hispanic Center. Is that correct? Am I confusing you, or does that make sense?
If you had, no, no problem. If you had voted on the motion as originally put forward, that would have been the end of the issue. You would have to amend that motion to do something different.
Right. So whether we all voted unanimously yes or no, the Hispanic Center would not have been funded tonight preceding Councilwoman Diggs' motion.
That's, that would have been the end of the, of the question based on that vote, right?
Okay. Can we accept her motion and vote on it without going back to an ad hoc? Are we doing, are we now outside the purview of the ad hoc? Are we going to have to recommit this?
Here's the answer. I was listening to Councilwoman Diggs' motion, amendment to the motion, and it really wasn't an amendment until she added the rider about revisiting this in September. That, in a way, operates as an amendment to the motion. It's interesting because, and I don't know if the 25,000 was originally considered in the committee level, but if that's the same amount, that, that was not amended in, in that motion. So basically, it goes back to what you said, which is, it doesn't really operate to do anything except repeat the main motion. However, the appendage to revisit September 1st, or whatever the date was, would probably operate as an amendment, so that could be put forward. If that's adopted, then you go to the main motion, and you have the appendage added to the main motion. If it's defeated, then you go to the main motion again.
Okay, so we've, we have a motion on the floor now. We have Councilwoman Diggs' motion on the floor now.
Yes.
If we vote for that motion, do we then have to vote for the preceding motion to?
You're voting for the report as amended.
And if we, okay, thank you very much. So it's one vote. We vote right now for the report?
No, it's two votes.
Two votes.
Two votes. One on the amendment, and then a vote on the report as amended.
As amended. Okay. Right, and then we have to go back and vote for the report as amended.
Yes.
That's correct.
And if that vote were to fail, the whole thing fails.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Just Eber. We're on the amendment now. We're on the amendment.
Just for clarification, Les, please, if I can ask you to give us a minute, through the chair. Just for clarification purposes, now, Councilwoman Diggs initially said to put in an amendment to reinstate the money, and then, as you indicated, also said that in March, reconvene the, not March, September, reconvene the ad hoc. So if we were to vote affirmatively for that, then you're saying that we would meet in September, reinstate the money, and then go back to the original motion?
It's very simple, folks. There's a motion on the floor to amend the report to add $25,900 to the Hispanic Center in this fiscal year. If this amendment passes, the report will be amended. The results of the ad hoc committee have been changed.
Okay, thank you.
On that on the floor, then you would vote again to accept the report as amended. Okay, so I just want to, I didn't mean to get, and Mr. Pinter, one quick question. Notification for meetings, could you please review the requirements for notification for meetings?
What's required under statute is when a public agency meets, whether it be the Common Council or the committee of the council, as in this case, the, the city clerk must, or the city must post notice at least 24 hours before that meeting in the office of the town clerk. Typically, the, the notice of the meeting is stamped by the town clerk indicating the time of receipt. As I understand it, in this case, the notice was stamped and posted, again, as I understand it, on the 19th of May for a meeting on the 22nd, I believe. So based on the 24-hour requirement, that has been met. The posting of the same piece of paper for noticing the council meeting, the time and place, typically past practice has it that the city clerk or someone under her charge posts it on the outside billboard and in the common council room or someplace else. That is past practice. That is not statutorily required, but it is practice.
Further discussion and the amendment of restoring the funding. Mr. Sheen, easy. And then, Mrs. Teicholz.
A point of order. Now, can we discuss recommitment?
Not now.
Under this, or is this under that?
Right now, we have an amendment on the floor to restore the funding. You can discuss recommitment if the amendment should fail, but right now, you have, the amendment takes precedent over our motion to recommit.
Did my comments, I'll run later.
Further, Mrs. Teicholz.
Thank you. Through the chair, to Dan Garrick, please.
Mr. Garrick, please. Mr. Garrick, you're being summoned, sir.
Now, the amendment is for reinstatement for this fiscal year. Since the fiscal year runs in quarters, correct? The, the funding runs in quarters to, to the grant agencies?
The payments to the grant agencies are typically done in quarterly payments.
We only have four year, four weeks left approximately to this, to this fiscal year. How would that money be distributed if it were to be reinstated?
So that'd be one, one payment to the Hispanic Center?
Further discussion on the amendment. Mr. Cavill.
Through the director, through the chairs of the Director of Finance.
Mr. St. Lere.
Based on the current economic climate here in the city, and Mrs. Teicholz's last question, where would we come up with the $25,900 if we had to?
It would have to come out of contingency.
Thank you.
Mr. Rotella for the, well, I'm going to give you the first time because you had a sort of a technical question, so go ahead.
Thanks. Okay, I was on the grant agency ad hoc last year, the one that Councilman Riley had alluded to. Had it right here, as a matter of fact, and I think in March of 2007, we, we did the budget a month earlier, and the Hispanic Center came up, along with the other 30 or so agencies, that we were considering. At that time, just to give you a little bit of history, a board member came up and spoke about the Hispanic Center and some of the troubles they were going through, and it was my recollection, it may not have happened this way, but my recollection was that the board member actually requested that we freeze funds until two things happened. The first thing was an audit. They were going to conduct an audit. The audit was going to take place sometime in the summer, it'd be summer of 2007, and they were going to get a new director. Statements were made at that time that if the audit discovered nothing amiss, that there was no malfeasance or missing funds, and a new director was appointed, the funds would be unfrozen. Now, that was the intent of the grant agency ad hoc in 2007. It does not mean that the intent of that ad hoc has any bearing on the vote of the full council, but I can assure you that the intent of the ad hoc was to approve funding for the full amount in 2007 for that fiscal year, the one that's ending right now, if two conditions were met. And those two conditions, as I said, was an audit, finding nothing amiss, and a new director. It's my understanding that both of those conditions have been met, and I will be voting in favor of Councilwoman Diggs' motion because I was on that grant agency, and that's what came up. You have to do a couple of things, and if you do, Danbury in turn will restore those funds to you. And the Hispanic Center did those things, and I am comfortable in restoring those funds. And I'd like to make one other comment. The money essentially is not going to the Hispanic Center. It is going to the clients of the Hispanic Center. Very often, we'll give some money and it will wind up stuck in place. It'll go to capital improvements or whatever. This money is actually going to programs, and the beneficiary of those programs will be people in the Danbury area, and I am comfortable with that, too. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rotella. Further discussion.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just some information from the, from the finance director, if possible. I think the question of funding, we do have to take into consideration, you know, the economic factor of our city, you know, and what's going on. I know that the mayor has issued a freeze on some of the funding that's currently going on, and I know there's over $200,000 in the contingency fund currently. So I don't think that money is an issue, but the question I have, I think, is an issue that I have of communications. I know Councilwoman Diggs brought it up, and a lot of councilmen and women weren't there, so a lot of us really don't know the whole understanding of what's going on. You know, I tried to listen to the tape, and the tape is pretty much inaudible. It was very difficult to hear what was going on. I tried my best to hear it, and it was very hard. It's just the tape recording itself. It's very hard to hear. It's just a machine. So if possible, I know it's not the motion on the floor, and I'll bring it up later after this motion, is it possible that we can just encumber the money and then just bring it back to committee until we can discuss it in more detail, and then later, we can, whether or not we want to issue the money? Is that possible?
Sure.
But therefore, it's coming out of this year's budget, but it's being actually paid in, in next year.
Past July 1. I'm sorry? Past July 1, into the new, next fiscal year.
And we encumber it as an expense this year? Basically, it's a payable, but actually pay it out next year?
Well, I mean, you would have to commit to it.
Commit to it.
Correct.
Some kind of commitment.
Some kind of commitment, so basically.
If that's what you're saying, yes. I mean, you would, you would set up an accounts payable essentially, and then pay it out at that time.
As we would, so we can pay it out quarterly, whatever.
But right now, it's not earmarked in the budget.
Correct. Correct, so we can take money out of contingency, encumber it, pay it out quarterly, for whatever we wish to pay it. So we can actually come back and say, you know, if we make another amendment motion, say, up to X dollars, we can do that. And so we have time as a council to discuss it in more detail instead of wasting a lot of time this evening. So later on, we can actually deny it, again, not to expend it, if that's possible.
Yeah, but it's not an open-ended thing. There is a.
But it's possible.
It's possible, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, any further discussion? We're on the amendment now, on the amendment, folks. Seeing the amendment, all those in favor of restoring? Okay, Mr. Cavill's requested a roll call vote, so will the clerk please prepare for a roll call vote? All those in favor of restoring the funding for the Hispanic Center for the 07, 08 fiscal year to the, to the dollar amount of $25,900, signify by saying aye, and will the clerk please call the roll?
McMahon.
No.
Nagashay.
No.
Johnson.
No.
Trombetta.
No.
Caladino.
No.
Perkins.
Yes.
Visconti.
Yes.
Sheen East.
Yes.
Esposito.
No.
Sadi.
No.
Cavill.
No.
Rotella.
Yes.
Diggs.
Yes.
Teicholz.
No.
Arcanti.
No.
Curran.
No.
Knapp.
No.
Levy.
No.
Riley.
Yes.
Seaberry.
No.
Stanley.
There'd be 15 nos, six yeses, motion fails. Now, we're back to the main motion of the reports. Mr. Sheen, easy.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to make a motion at this time that we recommit the ad hoc on the Hispanic Center.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded by Mr. Rotella. I just want to check with Mr. Pinter about one issue. Motion to recommit takes precedent over the main motion. Is it required by the majority, or is it simply majority? Okay. Motion's been made by Mr. Sheen, easy, seconded by Mr. Rotella. Motion to recommit, basically, the net effect of that would be to send this issue back to the, it has to go back to the current ad hoc that's already met. That would be the ad hoc that's been chaired by Mr. Riley, and Mr. Nagashay, and Mr. Visconti that are currently serving on it. That would be the, basically, effect of a motion to recommit. Is it debatable? It's debatable, okay. So with that, we have a motion to recommit, which takes precedence over the motion to accept the report. Is there any debate about the motion to recommit? Yes, Mr. Sheen, easy.
Thank you, Your Honor. I, I think I was stating before, you know, and Councilwoman led up to this, you know, a lot of council people were not at that meeting, and no disrespect to the council, to the city clerk, it wasn't her fault. I believe there was communication problems from the chairman of that committee, that it wasn't properly communicated, time and, and place. We, it's always been a rule that the city clerk always sends out a weekly calendar of meetings, ad hoc meetings, which a lot of council people use to set their weekly meetings. Calendar went out normally, that wasn't on it. So when it did appear, a lot of people didn't know about it in a normal manner that we get our communications. Yes, some people come here to the ad hoc room and look on the board, some come to the. to the glass box. You can see by the people who attended, a lot of people who were very open about it weren't at this meeting. I mean, so I think, I tried to listen to the tape, it was very inaudible, it was very hard to hear, you know, and I tried very hard to hear it, it was very difficult. So a lot of questions I had, and the Hispanic person is not here this evening either, so... Listen, in the back.
The one guy that pressed on what?
Okay, so I don't know if we want to drag this on, but I think we owe it to the people who wanted to be there, weren't there, to ask our questions to her. So, but I don't want to sit here till 2:00 in the morning and start asking questions. So I think at least we owe it to the Hispanic Center that we debate this correctly amongst ourselves and not in a form like we have this evening, and then come back where we all had an opportunity to ask our questions. Because I was at that ad hoc meeting, the budget ad hoc meeting, '07-'08, and I did spoke against taking the money, I mean, against for taking the money away. I brought it up. And I brought it up for the reasons that they weren't financially prepared, you know, they were in disarray. The executive director was away from their mission, their audit was not up to par, so we had to, we took the funding away, and we gave them certain criterias. The mayor even spoke, once they met those certain criterias, we would refund, we reestablished those funds. Now, apparently, we met in the budget for the '08-'09 meeting, we had a lengthy discussion on that again. We tried to restore it, Councilman Cavill wanted a way for the ad hoc meeting to meet so we can discuss it there. Apparently, some of us knew about it, some of us didn't. So here we are this evening discussing it again. I mean, I understand there's a problem with money, I understand that, but we definitely need to debate this correctly, which is why I asked the question, can we encumber funds up to a certain amount of money? And then we can debate it correctly. I mean, we need to discuss this. So which is why we, I think we need to recommit it, you know, in our fairness to the people who they serve. You know, I don't think we're, anybody here this evening can really want to debate this. It doesn't hurt to sit for another meeting if he does it timely and quickly, we can be back here next month and debate it properly, which is why I want to recommit it.
Thank you. Mr. Sheeneysey, Mr. Sadi, I saw your hand come up first.
Move the question on recommittal.
Motion's been made to move the question. Is there, oh, we need a second on moving the question on the recommittal? Right, we don't have a second yet to the motion. We need a second on Mr. Sadi. Okay, so Mr. Caladreno's seconded Mr. Sadi's motion to move the question. I believe, Mr. Pinter, a motion to move the question is not debatable? It's not debatable. It's simply a way to test your mind if you want to vote on recommittal. Remember, we're on recommittal, not on the report. So, all those in favor with, we better call for a roll call vote, Madam Clerk. All those in favor of moving the question, signify by saying aye. Will the clerk please call the roll? All those in favor of moving the question, please signify by saying aye. All opposed with, now, hold on, we're gonna call the roll. If you're opposed to moving the question, you want to debate the motion of recommittal more, you would vote no. Everybody got it? Okay, not too fast? Charlie, you got it? We have a motion on the floor to move the question on recommittal, been seconded by Mr. Caladreno. Okay, a motion to move the question means we'll go directly to voting on recommittal if this should pass, without any further debate or discussion. Okay. So if you're in favor of recommittal, you vote aye, if you're opposed, excuse me, if you're in favor of moving the question, vote aye, if you're opposed to moving the question, vote nay.
McMahon?
Yes.
Negashet?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Trombetta?
Aye.
Caladreno?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Visconti?
Yes.
Genise?
No.
Esposito?
Yes.
Sadi?
Yes.
Cabo?
Yes.
Rotello? Diggs?
Yes.
Ty Schultz?
No.
Arcanti? Curran?
Yes.
Knapp?
Yes.
Levy?
Yes.
Riley?
Yes.
Seaberry?
Yes.
Stanley?
Yes.
There'd be three noes and eighteen yeses. We'll move now to voting on recommittal. The vote to recommittal would refer this item back to the original ad hoc committee that was appointed, that would be Mr. Riley, Mr. Visconti, and Mr. Negashet. So, Madam Clerk could call the roll. An aye means yes, you want to issue recommitted, and nay means no, you want to vote on accepting the report.
McMahon?
No.
Negashet?
No.
Johnson?
No.
Trombetta?
Yes.
Caladreno?
No.
Perkins?
Yes.
Visconti?
No.
Genise?
Yes.
Esposito?
No.
Sadi?
Yes.
Cabo?
No.
Rotello?
Yes.
Diggs?
Yes.
Ty Schultz?
Yes.
Arcanti?
No.
Curran?
No.
Knapp?
No.
Levy?
Yes.
Riley?
Yes.
Seaberry?
No.
Stanley?
No.
Motion to recommit fails, 12 to 9. We're back to the motion of accepting, the main motion of accepting the report. Is there any further discussion on the motion to accept the report? Mr. Cavill?
Your Honor, just for a couple of points of clarification, there were some things that were said by council members tonight about this meeting not being properly posted, and I would just like to say that I have in front of me the meeting notice that was posted, and it was stamped, received in the town clerk's office on Monday, May 19, at 9:35 a.m., which was well before the 24-hour minimum that's required by state statute, and that this meeting was also posted on the website for view of council members to look at the city website, and I just wanted to let the members know that that was there and it was marked. And that although what our city clerk does is a courtesy to all of us, isn't mandatory by law, and the committee was called for the 22nd after that weekly notice was sent out, and it just missed the posting on that because of its timeliness.
Mr. Cavill, let me just note to the council, if you do have a concern about a specific issue, let the chairman of that particular committee know so that they notify you specifically when they do schedule a meeting so there's no confusion in the future related to that. Mrs. Diggs?
Thank you, Your Honor. There wasn't any confusion on my part. I didn't know that the meeting was being posted. I look at my computer email every day, I didn't see it. I actually came into City Hall on Monday, I did not see anything in City Hall in terms of the posting.
Mrs. Diggs, further discussion? Mr. Seaberry? Okay, motions were made to move the question. Is that a second to making, to moving the question? Mr. Cavill's seconded moving the question. The motion to move the question is not debatable. A yes vote would be that you would, we would move immediately to voting on accepting the report for Mrs. Stanley's motion at the beginning of this discussion, and no vote would be that you would want more discussion, more debate about the acceptance of the report. So having said that, will the clerk please call the roll on moving the question? We're on moving the question, ladies and gentlemen. Okay, Madam Clerk, please call the roll. This motion is on moving the question.
McMahon? Negashet?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Trombetta?
No.
Caladreno?
Yes.
Perkins?
No.
Visconti?
Yes.
Genise?
No.
Esposito?
Yes.
Sadi?
No.
Cabo?
Yes.
Rotello?
No.
Diggs? Ty Schultz?
No.
Arcanti?
No.
Curran?
Yes.
Knapp?
No.
Levy?
Yes.
Riley?
No.
Seaberry?
Yes.
Stanley?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, motion passes 11 to 10. I believe our Code of Ordinances says that you do not need a two-thirds majority to move the question, it's a simple majority based on our Code of Ordinances. So if you go reading Robert's Rules in the morning, you'll see that Robert's Rule says you need a two-thirds majority, but we have a Code of Ordinances that supersedes Robert's Rules and says you need a simple majority, okay? So now we're in the motion to accept the report without debate. So an aye vote means you'll accept the report, no vote means you'll reject the report. With that, we'll do a roll call vote on this as well. Madam Clerk.
McMahon?
Yes.
Negashet?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Trombetta?
Yes.
Caladreno?
Yes.
Perkins?
No.
Visconti?
Yes.
Genise?
No.
Esposito?
Yes.
Sadi?
Yes.
Cabo?
Yes.
Rotello?
No.
Davis?
No.
Ty Schultz?
Yes.
Arcanti?
Yes.
Curran?
Yes.
Knapp?
Yes.
Levy?
Yes.
Riley?
No.
Seaberry?
Yes.
Stanley?
Yes.
There'd be sixteen yeses and five noes. Madam Clerk, let's move on to item 32, please. Madam Clerk, item 32, please.
Ad hoc report, Berkeley Holdings Corporation.
Mr. Curran, you want to read this one since...
Mr. Mayor. Acting Chairman Curran called the meeting to order at 6:30 on May 27, 2009, and the attendants were committee member, Councilman Visconti, Mayor Mark Bouton, Attorney of Las Lilla Pinter, Corporation Counsel, Paul Estefan, Airport Administrator, Attorney Paul Jaber, representing Berkeley Holdings Corporation, Bruce Weiser, and Joshua Poland of Berkeley Holding Corporation, and members of the public were also in attendance. Councilman Caladreno, Chairman of the Ad hoc Committee, was absent. Councilman Curran stated that the call of the meeting was to discuss the request of the Berkeley Holdings Corporation to have access to the new gate at the reserve in order to have emergency access to their property. Mayor Bouton gave a brief overview of the request. He stated that Berkeley, a Fortune 500 company, purchased a plot of land for a data and storage center, Berkeley's businesses and the insurance and related products. They applied for a zoning permit for a Heely pad on the site, but neighboring residents were opposed to the proposal. A compromise was reached by allowing Berkeley Holding Corporation 24/7 access to the airport by providing access to the site at the Jenny Drive Gate, eliminating their need for a Heely pad. The compromise addresses the concerns of the neighbors. Berkeley Holdings would only utilize the entrance for emergency purposes. Councilman Curran and Visconti discussed the use of the entrance by emergency vehicles. It was also stated that Berkeley Holdings Corporation personnel would only enter by motor vehicle. Airport Administrator Estefan stated that he had no problem with the arrangement and would provide access to the site upon need. Attorney Pinter advised that the mayor's letter would serve as a letter of agreement for this purpose. It would be amended to reflect that the square footage would be up to 200,000 square feet. Berkeley would reserve the right to receive tax deferral benefits, and the terms of this agreement would be in effect for as long as they own property on the reserved premises. Councilman Visconti moved to accept the letter of agreement in the language that would be added by the Corporation Counsel for final approval to the Berkeley Corporation, seconded by Councilman Curran. Discussion followed with Mayor Bouton stating that a public record of the agreement was in order to provide transparency for all parties concerned. Motion passed by unanimous vote. Councilman Visconti moved to adjourn at 6:45, seconded by Councilman Curran. Motion passed by unanimous vote.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. What's your pleasure, counsel? Mr. Curran?
I'll make a motion that we accept the ad hoc report on the Berkeley Holdings Corporation.
Motion made and seconded by Mr. Riley. Discussion under this item?
Thank you, Your Honor. If I may, the paragraph where stated Attorney Pinter advised that the mayor's letter would serve as a letter of agreement for this purpose, for all intents and purposes, I was wondering if we could have that stricken from the record due to the language in the last sentence?
I think the issue, I think, you know, Councilman Visconti had a couple, we had a discussion about this prior to the meeting. I think the issue is the word "receive," and perhaps we want to replace "receive" to "apply." We can't stop somebody from applying for deferrals, that doesn't mean they get them. As you know, that's a legislative discussion that's had here and the vote is taken here in front of this body. And their concern was that by the letter originally I had written, I basically outlawed them from applying, and so we say, well, you can certainly reserve the right to come in, but I'm not really sure where that's going to go. So would that be acceptable to you if we just changed "receive" to "apply"? Mr. Visconti, or...
I don't, I'm just trying to protect something that we've gone to, you know, we had issues before with the tax deferrals and everything, and when I saw this, as we discussed earlier, if you want to leave it in there, but there's nothing saying that they're not going to come back or they're not, you know, they will come back.
Well, yeah, I mean, they want to reserve the right to come back, but that doesn't mean that they get what they asked for. And we can't say that they can't come in, it's in our Code of Ordinances, we can't automatically outline it. But if you'd like, we could change that word "receive" to say "apply." So we're saying, yeah, you can apply. I think "receive" sort of implies that it's already given.
That's fine, thank you.
Does that make sense? Further discussion on this issue? Mr. Perkins?
Just to follow up, thank you, Your Honor, through you, too, you actually, just to follow up on what Councilman Visconti just said, does that language even need to be present in this particular...
It's, remember, this is the report. If you read the letter, it's silent about the issue of deferrals. It doesn't mention them at all.
And that's my concern. Why should it be in here?
It doesn't have to be in here. This was, the report was a discussion of a letter prior to this where it said they don't intend or want any deferrals. They said, well, we don't think that's fair, we want at least the right to apply for a deferral. So in the new letter that we drafted, we don't mention deferrals at all. So you're being asked to adopt the report and to adopt the communication.
Thank you.
Sadi?
So, just to clarify, the motion is not to take in everything that the committee discussed or talked about, but specifically the letter agreement and the terms that are in there. So, there's no preapproval of any tax deferral in the letter, and that anybody would as of right be able to apply, and just for the purposes of legislative intent, the intent of the committee and the intent of this body is not to, in advance, give them any sort of tax deferral.
That's correct.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Further discussion. Mr. Otello?
Thanks, Your Honor. Through the Chair to Director Estefan.
Mr. Estefan?
While you're walking up to your paw, I'll ask the question. We've heard, I've had a conversation with the mayor on this, and I've talked to people on the ad hoc, that we're looking at somewhere between ninety, eighty, and a hundred events per year, which to me translates to something in the vicinity of one or two events per week where they're landing at the airport and getting a key from you, which I presume that's correct. They get a card key from you. You meet them there, and you unlock the gate so they can do this back and forth thing. And that's fine as far as it goes, and it's great that you're willing to do that, but what if these guys are rolling in at three o'clock in the morning every couple of weeks? I mean, how willing are you to go the distance for these guys to take care of this hotbed of, you know, IT, smoking servers and stuff as they come flying up in their jet helicopters from New York and waking you up at three o'clock in the morning? If you're like me, once you wake up, you can't go back to bed. So, are you, are you comfortable for this for the duration? Because we're asking an awful lot of you, it seems to me.
I'm getting younger. Job is making me younger. Let me assure you that at three AM in the morning, if I have to be out there, I'll be out there, but certainly, from a security standpoint, we will be sitting down with them privately to discuss security measures, and we will make sure that they can get in and out safely and securely.
So, maybe you're not actually going to be handing them the key every time they come, is that what you're saying?
Well, you know, we don't discuss security measures in the public forum.
We also have an assistant airport administrator that's going to have to get up at three AM.
Fair enough. There's two of us, that'll be out of bed. So, you're comfortable with this going forward?
Yes, I am.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other discussion about this issue? Mr. Shinisi.
Thank you, Your Honor. I guess it's through the chair, I don't, do I have who can answer the question? My biggest concern would be abuse, that they're not abusing the privilege of going through this gate, and I know it's only supposed to be for emergency purposes only. What constitutes an emergency? Is that described in the contract, or who would dictate whether or not that's an emergency or not?
It isn't defined. Emergency will be defined by some kind of practice and need. The agreement itself is based upon a request that this solve a problem, and the use of this proposal to transport back and forth will be based upon, again, some kind of need that's expressed through the airport administrator, through city officials, and determinations will be made more or less on a discretionary basis, if you will. I don't know, and I don't think anyone knows what constitutes an emergency. Basically, it's for transport, for the needs of the business, for their data business. So, somewhere in there, after a while, we'll find out what that emergency, if you will, is.
So, the way I understand it, after a year of them using it, then that would itself dictate what an emergency would be by their use?
Put another way, we'll have a much better idea of what the parameters of the need are or is, and how to define emergency. We could always, if you want, we could amend it later, or at least clarify to you, or through somebody to you that hears what we found, if you want.
Mr. Riley?
Oh, thank you, Your Honor. Through the Chair.
Mr. Pinter?
Could we please go home?
Do you want a legal ruling?
Yeah, the ruling was.
The presiding officer. Or I should say, somebody can make a motion.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, then I'll try your minds. All's in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed signify by saying nay. Ayes have it, motion carries unanimously. Mr. President, Department reports?
Your Honor, I'd like to make a motion that we waive the reading of the department reports, as all members have copies, and copies are on file in the city clerk's office.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion on department reports? Mr. Perkins? Mr. Shinisi?
A quick question to the Director of Public Health. Is he here?
He's left the building.
Okay, so, I'll direct it through the mayor, and I'll also try to reach it to him. Basically, my question would be is, is I got some complaints regarding the way these measures, whether or not, since there's no report here, whether or not that function is being handled correctly. So, I guess I would go that through his department tomorrow for some type of report.
I can tell you, he's doing an outstanding job. Mr. Esposito has actually come up with some neat ways to generate more revenue than what we're already generating. We've had no complaints into my office that I'm aware of. Mrs. St. Hilaire hasn't received any complaints. Our revenues are up, and he continues to do the job, and actually, we added some duties to him, most notably the honor boxes, which now Mr. Esposito is responsible for tagging when they go up. So, we certainly haven't any complaints here. I don't know if, Antoni, if you've heard any from Dean.
I took a cop to the fire for the bomb scare.
Any other discussion? Mr. Visconti?
Thank you. I'll be very short. I was looking at Seaberry when I said that, that's why. I just, I just wanted to thank everybody for the kudos this evening. It really wasn't necessary. But I would be remiss if I did not thank the Fire Department, the Police Department, and the EMS personnel that responded to the incident that we, unfortunate incident that I was involved in. They all did a very, very good job, and were on the scene very quickly, and took care of the fire, and the young lad who has the smoke inhalation and burns, several burns around his body. That's it. Thank you.
Any other discussion about department reports? Mr. Seaberry?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will also keep my remarks brief, but I wanted to congratulate the Fire Department and Police Department, as well as yourself, Mr. Mayor, on, what was it, last Tuesday, a week ago, when there was a bomb scare at Danbury High School that completely evacuated. These guys took charge, as you did yourself, keeping the kids safe, and more importantly, keeping these.
Thank you, Mr. Seaberry. Mr. Sadi?
Thank you, Your Honor. Through the Chair to the Chief of Police.
Mr. Baker?
Chief, looking at the traffic enforcement comparison from '07 to '08, I know we had watched over several months last year, a significant increase in the issuance of infractions, warnings, as well as violations, but looking at the first four months of this year versus the first four months of last year, there's almost a fifty percent decline. What do you attribute that to? Is there just less violations occurring, or is there something that we're missing here?
There's a couple of things I'd attribute it to. Number one, there's been about two-hundred and fifty less accidents this year than last year. The other thing is, we're short of personnel. We're at one-forty-eight. We got three pending disability applications. I probably have ten people on light duty, so if you give me some people, we'll do some more enforcement.
Okay. Well, thank you very much.
Thanks, Chief. Appreciate it. Mr. Perkins?
Thank you. Mr. Shepherd isn't here, but I'd like to just say the Film Festival so far was, the numbers aren't back yet, but it was a success, and thank everyone who participated in it.
It was a success. Thank you, Mr. Perkins. Good point, Mr. Rottel.
Yeah, let me echo that, too, especially with the bike cops and the fire watch guys and all those guys. The city pulled together, and when we pulled off the Film Festival the first time, and if you went there, you know what I'm talking about. If you didn't go, you've got to go next year if we have one. It was great. It was well worth it. And thanks to the whole city, the mayor's department, and the council for voting this off, and the city center. It was one of those things where the town came together, put on a show, and people came in from all over the place to see it, and they were happy with what they saw.
Here, here. Thank you, Mr. Otello. Any other discussion on department reports? Seeing none, then I'll try your minds in acceptance. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. All opposed? We have one add-on agenda, item for the agenda. Mr. Cabo?
Your Honor, at this time, I'd like to make a motion that we add an item number thirty-four to the agenda.
Seconded. Seconded by Mr. Otello. All's in favor of adding on item thirty-four, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Madam Clerk, item thirty-four.
Resolution, runway twenty-six. To Mayor Bob Bowden, Honorable Members of County Council, Paul Estefan Airport Administrator, June third, two thousand eight, runway twenty-six. Please find a catch for your consideration and approval of reservation to apply for a federal grant to improve the runway twenty-six safety areas. If you have any questions, please feel free to contact me, and certainly call the FDR Ex-Project.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. What's your pleasure, counsel? Mr. Tysholz?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to make a motion to receive the communication and adopt the resolution to authorize Mayor Bowden and Paul Estefan to apply to the Federal Aviation Administration